Call the order, call me for four thirty-two. And so we'll start with the consent agenda. Um, Rick had mentioned that some Friends members might come, but I don't see them, so.
Could we just leave it so that we could, we could move that up if they showed, if any of them come, we can move that up for their convenience? I mean, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I agree, fine. Does anybody want to make a motion with that adjustment? If any Friends members show up?
I made a motion to call me to move that up.
Okay?
Sorry.
And then are you also approving the agenda in a minute?
I approve the agenda in a minute.
Sorry.
Okay, and so we don't have to roll call anymore.
I know.
Except for financials. Except for financials, so did I register well? But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, and any votes? All right, so the agenda passes with that change? And do we have any further comments? Okay, are you ready to communicate from the public viewing scene?
Uh, I don't know whether FOIA qualifies or not, but we do, we did receive one FOIA this month. Uh, and it is in the process of what being billed. I reached out to some of you for some information earlier in the week and asked what was the number.
Okay, and so we'll move on to this library report.
Yeah, I apologize, I expected to be a little further along in recovery, but I am now. I'm going to go with two hands. Losing, I don't think we got a clear on that, maybe you don't want to share that. I, I have shoulders here. Oh, okay. Uh, so there is a save on brand before the impact. It's, maybe it's not.
No, it's in there. I didn't see any one. You're just sitting there.
I should have looked here. I should have looked here. So. So, uh.
It's like real life.
The big, the big news is, is as I've shared with all of you by now, is that our assistant city librarian, uh, and head of circulation, former head of technical services, uh, former, uh, locomobile driver, uh, I.
Done it all.
I don't have time, I don't, I don't have time to go through all the jobs. But after twenty-nine years, uh, it's, uh, it's leaving the Gator Public Library. Uh, he has retired from here, but he's not leaving the library business. Uh, and Robert will go on to another position. Uh, I'll let, get to him if he wants to share anything about that or not. And I just want to, I want to admit is that, that we are saying thank you. Uh, and thank you for twenty-nine years of, of oil and hard-working service. And, uh, I know you guys are going to ask about future plans, and I'm happy to talk about that. But right now, I just want to focus on, you know.
We won't miss you.
On saying, on saying thanks. So like a bull's roar, right? But you know, the positive side of this is, I'm, you know, again, he can, he can talk about this if he wants to, but you know, both, both personal, I'm happy for him both personally and professionally. Uh, you know, professionally, I can tell you a little bit that he's, I think he's going to a, a, a position for which his skill set is uniquely suited. I think it's an exciting opportunity for him, and I'm really happy for him, so, uh.
I'm glad he didn't say that at the place.
I would not say.
I know, he keeps saying, you know, he's leaving us.
Uh, and, and, and. Please remember on July twenty-eighth, if you can, uh, at four, was it four to six? Four to six, just an open house, you know, uh, please drop in and, and share your wherewiches. The other, uh, hey Carl, the other thing that I want to, uh, I'm going to let the division to do their own reports, but since Matt's not here, I'm going to give your real free systems administration report. Uh, Key and Chris have been working on, probably solved by now. Uh, uh, picture computers freezing up and as of the writing of his report hadn't solved that. Has that improved, has it gone away?
I haven't seen any emails this week.
Okay, so, uh, and, and Key, along with Nick Lane from, uh, Jonathan Thomas, and Carol Zeiss, and Melissa Henkall, have worked really hard to get, uh, what we call Discovery Services up and going. And it's live now, right?
It is live, I'm waiting on one thing before the press release comes out.
Yeah, so you can, you can, you can go to our search bar on our website, on the, on the homepage, and search everything, like all of our, all, yeah, searches across all of our apps in our catalog. It said, it's a, uh, website to have that going. And I will let the respective division heads give their own departmental reports. Oh, forgot to talk about this first. Sorry, uh. And a point of clarification, when I, when I give you guys these, these search numbers, uh, they're not exactly what Robert's reporting, what he reports, sir. Because I'm giving, I'm, I'm combining, uh, electronic circulation numbers I get from, from Melissa and databases, and, and it's a, it's a, it's more of an overview, uh, and it's less granular than, than the stuff that Robert talks about. But so this is Jim of last year? Wow, aren't we better? This is Jim of two years ago. So as you can see, it's still a fairly significant drop-off. Uh, there's some interesting points to that. This is the change from twenty-twenty, wow, look at that, two hundred, uh, children's materials up two hundred fifteen percent. We were open, uh, three days a week in June last year in limited hours, so, uh, it doesn't tell us a whole lot. So this is, these are our numbers from, from twenty-nineteen. What we're looking at here is adult materials, young adult, children's, and then overall. And if you look at that, obviously, there's going to be a pretty precipitous drop-off from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty. And we, we bounced back, but, you know, that's not, that's not huge. This is the biggest number since February of twenty-twenty. So it's, it's pointing in the right direction, but, uh, and this is what we're projecting to change from twenty-nineteen. I think, usually, you get about halfway through the year, you feel pretty good about your projection. You know, you've got a half-year worth of data, and you've got a model, you know where the ups and downs are every year. I have no confidence in this. I think this prediction will get rosier as the year goes on. But we're looking at a drop in, in everything using, uh, our current model. So the twelve-month rolling trend is when we look at the last twelve months compared to the twelve months before that, compared to the twelve months before that. So the last twelve months still includes a lot of the shutdown period. Uh, and that gives us a pretty steady decline. Again, COVID has a huge part to play in that. Uh, this is same information in the, in the form of percentages rather than raw numbers. And this is by material type, so we're looking at, here are the blue is books, uh, and this is DVDs. This is audio, uh, purple is magazines, periodicals. And, and that is equipment essentially, uh, other, other materials. So, you know, I, I think that we see that, I always look at, audio is a huge decline. And that's because we're talking about physical audio, not the downloadable. That's where it's going, same way with, same way with video. And where I begin to, to get concerned is that, and this is, oh, this is twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, so. Yeah, so. We're still looking at half for, uh, for videos. This year's half of the, this month, this year is half of what we had two years ago. These look great, because what we're looking at here is equipment, you know, hotspots, things like that. There's more of it to circulate, and, uh, and downloadable there, those little conferences. So some people can't come into the building and they wanted to use library, that's what they did. And again, our projected change is, is not very, uh, very optimistic, but I think this, each month is going to get a little bit better, because we just don't have a good model. Twelve-month rolling trend, uh, uh, trend for, uh, material type is pretty much the same thing. You look at huge decreases in, in audiovisual stuff. And this is the same thing as, uh, in terms of percentage. So I, I think that, you know, probably by fall, those projections for this year don't look a lot better, because we're, we're using, you know, I'm using twenty-nineteen as a model, uh, and it's not very reliable.
Okay. Any questions for Rick? All right, well, move on to Robert.
Sorry, division heads.
Rick, uh, craft tells a lot of the story. I, I think it's worth noting that you have, um, the increase in the circulation between that people are coming back and starting to check out materials, uh, and the physical circulation actually. The number of checkouts, about twenty thousand, it's, uh, has, it goes back, you have to go all the way back to, I think, twenty-nineteen before you see that number of checkout. So not only are they coming back, but they're glad they were open, it seems like if they're really coming back. And the same thing with the patrons, the amount of patrons that are checking out materials, which is something that I track. Uh, I track the people who come from the caterer who come in, and the people who from all around come in. That number is about two, and you have to go all the way back to twenty-twenty. Well, there was a big rush right when we closed in March, uh, last year, and everybody's trying to get in and get some stuff. But, uh, before then, you know, you'd have to go back a little ways. So it's, as, as Rick said, you know, we're on the uptick. Of course, curbside is going down a little bit, and, uh, we find that the hotspots are starting to take off again. People want more of it, of like, but, uh, we, you know, a lot of this last month, you know, we've been talking for a while about my presentation, the topic, whatever, so it's been sort of getting everybody kind of caught up with the things that I do, so I don't do that much of a thing.
The handoff, he spent, he spent a lot of his time, most of his time, I'd say, in the last few months, just working on the handoff, which is good for us.
I called it twelve times.
All right, questions for Robert? All right, so you need an agenda, actually. Do you need another one? All right, sorry. I just, I realized I was missing one, so, or Carl's missing one. Okay, we'll move on, and Becky's in here.
Hi. Hi. Okay, so last week I talked about, uh, or not last week, that would be weird. Last month, um, I talked about the fact that we were working with Project Think Well About Their Camp. So that is now officially over, it ended on the seventh. Uh, it was four weeks, um, we had a lot of children come through, and actually helped push our numbers up a bit. We had a hundred and ninety-one people come through, uh, the Global History Room, uh, in June, which was awesome. Um, so the camp is over, they got a lot out of it, they focused mainly on the coal mines and on the, uh, newspaper archives, uh, through their own review. Um, a lot of kids actually said, um, we'd be happy to come back with our parents and go through this, because they thought it was great to go through the newspaper, um, and find random stuff that you didn't know was in there. A lot of relatives were found, a lot of stories were found, it was pretty interesting. Um, so that's good. Hopefully, they come back next year, we'll see what happens. Uh, but I have no idea what's going to happen until they start planning, probably in September. Um, the other thing is, is we have been working on getting our actual collection through document collections on Omega. Uh, the first collection is almost done, uh, and that is the HIBBS collection, it's a very small one-box thing. HIBBS.
HIBBS.
H-I-B-B-S, there you go. Um, the next one we're going to do is this Charlotte Meyer collection, which is a bit larger. That collection includes, um, the notes and information used to do the People in Places of Old Caterer Books, which are red and blue, if you remember, they were done in the seventies, redone in, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-thirteen? One of them was done? That information was put together by the Zonta Club, which is basically, was at that time Charlotte Meyer and her many, many, and one of which was a librarian from here, um, who was also in Meyer, uh, gosh, I forget her name right now, but, uh, yeah, she was part of that as well. And it basically goes through buildings upon building and houses, and talks about the history of a lot of them. So once we get that material out there, it will be keyword searchable, so people can look up her stuff. And then I probably should mention this, I didn't have it on the record, but we have started planning for the hundred and fiftyth anniversary in four years, um, and I'm going to be heading that. So look for further information coming up sometime soon.
That's great. Okay. All right, thank you, Becky, any questions? All right, and.
Stand up, I can show off this, this is a medium child, but I had spoken about how we ordered T-shirts that our own Casey styling designed, and they arrived last week. And we're just so happy, and if you recognize, there's a little orange monster that's in Central Park, so now he's going to live on perpetually. So that's very exciting, they arrived just in time so that we can have our prize drawing, and about fifty kids are going to get a free T-shirt, and about six staff members ordered one. Thank you, Becky. Hope you enjoy it. So this is really exciting, because I was looking specifically at children's numbers, because in reality, adults have about two hundred and fifty signed up, young adult, we have about fifty signed up, staff only ten, and that's about on par, that's what we're used to seeing. But for children, back on June twenty-fifth, we had seven hundred and eighty-four kids signed up. And of course, pre-COVID, we liked sixteen hundred, big numbers like that. On July third, our number went up to eight hundred and sixty-nine, and as of today, we have nine hundred and seventy kids signed up for the summer reading program. That's just so cool, they're still signing up. Now, that doesn't mean that they've come in and gotten their rewards yet. So of that, about two hundred haven't come in to get their first Scratch and Smith sticker, or bookmark. Doesn't mean they're not reading. We have had families come in and have already earned all five of their summer reading prizes. And I might have mentioned this already, but John comes out with a thing, he's like, hold open your bags, and I'm just throwing, you get a tattoo, you get a gracer, you get a coupon, and so we're giving out tons and tons. And so we're doing a really great job at letting people know that they can sign up. And something else that's really bringing the kids back is we got the toys out. So the blocks are out, trains are out, we've got puzzles, we've thrown away, I think, the heel-looked stuff, and we brought out the stuff that's been new and sitting back waiting to be used. And the kids come in and they get really excited, because it's like the library's finally back. And Betty Jo just purchased child-sized masks for our kids, because that was our problem. The kids were coming in, they should have masks on, because they're not vaccinated, but the masks that we had weren't the right size. Betty Jo, she did a great job of searching, she found blue ones with puppy dogs and pink ones with puppy dogs, which would be perfect for paw prints.
Yes.
But then we also have those with weird unicorns.
Nice.
And ones with dinosaurs, so girls and boys, we're going to try to promote it, so kids will want to put them on. Baby Talk is coming back in August, and Family Literacy is coming back in September. And we know now that they're going to follow our rules, and that way, we know that people are, they're happy with what we're doing and our restrictions right now. And that will enable, enable us to look forward. So we're not quite ready to do ridiculous programs that could bring nine hundred people in the doors in one month, but we're thinking towards when we finally get people.
So one other thing, is the imagination library?
Yes, so, and that's not the Caterer Book Library, but it is in the partnership.
Yeah.
With United Way and the nomination. And so that was our first program, kind of geared towards kids. We had several kids come in, and the mayor, she read Little Intimate Hood.
I saw that.
And it was really sweet, and everybody was very, and the kids put on the masks, that was not a big deal, and all of the adults there were very happy. And we have freshmen, and we got our pictures taken with Dolly Barton, and hard work.
That's her, I see you guys didn't see it in the paper, it's Dolly Barton, imagination library, so.
Yes, for the ages of zero to five, chat children, the children who are signed up get a free book every month.
I'm so glad this happened. Right before COVID happened, I was talking to Rick about figuring out how we could get something like that happening in our town, and, and when I saw that, I was like, woo-hoo!
Just got to get them signed up.
Yeah, and we were, we were asked to, you know, we can't take any crap for this, we were asked to kind of, uh, we would, we'd be willing to take a, take part in it, but, yeah, of course.
Well, you put it out there at the university, it was happy.
Yeah, the community foundation and, and United Way, because I think that they did, they did the vocal work together, so, and I just think that, you know, Old Natalie and back in, they've all worked a great job with those two organizations, so.
There was a lot of representation from the community that day.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I just wanted to, uh, because that was pretty cool last time, and then.
Awesome, yeah. All right, Matt is not here today, and so we'll go.
Yeah, last week, I think. So I think, I was in Cleveland last month when you guys met, that's why I didn't realize we were doing it first. And I took my son to the Rock Hall of Fame, spent far less time there than I wanted to, because it was bad. But I did visit the Cleveland Public Library, which was going to be relocated next to my hotel, no coincidence. And I went all over this gorgeous building, and this one woman, she had this room that was a, uh, they do scanning, like if somebody wants their, their items scanned, like personal items, you know, they do it all there. And she's like, yeah, where are you from? And I took her home, and I was like, you know, I think it's a bar for you guys. And I said, yes. Because they have ten million items, at least, I think. Um, so that was pretty cool, and it's a great library, and it's fun. I don't think I've shown you any pictures, but you need to see them.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
You need to see them.
They're, uh, I don't know if he's still the director, but they're one-time directors in Champaign.
Really?
Yeah, so, but great, I have a library school, I was getting my resume ready, and I decided to go to Cleveland.
They're doing a big, they're reinvigorating, renovating all their branches, so I wouldn't, you have to go through the main branch, but, so that, that was just really cool, it's nice to know that. Anyway, um, so things are going to really get to T S, we are kind of juggling between, you know, the sort of bumpy Baker and Taylor shipments, although Julie thinks they're starting to level out. So what we've been doing is, as they come in, we put them on a cart, and he goes to a cataloger. And I know that doesn't sound exciting to you, but it's thrilling to me, because I've wanted this from day one, where instead of going from a box to a shelf to a cart, you know, he just goes straight to the cataloger. So that's awesome. Um, and so when we do have those downtime, we're working with Becky to relabel some materials there. We're re-labeling, re-classifying the yearbooks, because patrons don't need to see a long call number on every single book that's identical. So it's going to have the name on it, and we're going to do it with flat books. Um, we're doing a lot of the same things up in children's, we're getting the J-series looking better, we're cleaning up the old biographies, so those are the things we're going in with. Oh, and I, I have to, I have to just shamelessly plug this. Um, so in Polaris, uh, innovate, the innovative company that runs our ILS, they have this thing called Idea Lab. So a while back, I sent in a thing saying, we need to make it so when we're working in the back end, we don't have to click through four hundred libraries to select our own. When I started, when we started with Polaris, about eight years ago, something like that, it was thirteen clicks to get to Decatur, now it's something like seventeen clicks. And I know that doesn't sound like much, but when you're sitting on one, click, 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 and you're counting the clicks, why not have a button that says, "My library"? So it's gone through the first pass, now it's gone through the second pass, so I think we might actually get it. And then we don't have to pay for it. Uh, so my next move can be, how about you make the concept there? Because this thing is designed for a computer this big, and it is tiny, and most librarians are getting old. And it's like, thank you. So that's, uh, that's what we got going on.
Well, thank you, Carol. All right, well, we'll let you guys go. There we go, thank you for your coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is nice. Who wants to do this?
I missed one.
It was the first.
Okay. I was telling you that Thursday, I was like, wait a minute.
I was like, well, he's not here, but, come on, Becky.
I should, I should.
Oh, it doesn't matter. All right. So we'll move on to the committee report, so we'll start with the KCPR committee. Um, so we did meet on the first of July, and so we're going to go with the personnel update.
Sure, and, you know, this wasn't, uh, the question that, uh, most of your minds, it wasn't really discussed at this meeting, but, you know, uh, this month's KCPR meeting is, uh, is where you go, uh, after, after Robert moves on, and I've got, so the plan right now is that interim, I, I want to take a few months and work at, uh, and this is our strategic plan, do it once, but why, why do it once, let's look at reorganization, restructure. So I want to spend the next sixty to ninety days essentially, so interim, uh, head of search is going to be Carol Zeiss, and she's going to continue to do her, uh, her head of tech services. Uh, you know, interim, uh, assistant to librarian is going to be the librarian, and, uh, we were talking today, and, you know, and Shell and Betty Jo, obviously, are going to help out a lot, but, uh, Robert and I were talking today, and we said, well, so you're going to need this in a while. And, and I said, the more of that I get, the quicker I'm going to make a decision, you know, what I want to do, so. Uh, but I think it's, I think it's wise, when, when somebody is key, as Robert leaves, let's, let's take a look and see, is there, is there a more efficient way to structure the organization? Is there a way, uh, that we can, you know, recombine or flatten the, the structure? You know, we looked at this a few years ago, and we made a mind, you know, well, it seemed like a huge tweak, but it was really, it really didn't end up being out that much, uh, in then combining the children's and adult programs. But, you know, nothing's off the table at this point, which everybody's hearing. You say that, that scares staff, but I'm not talking about like layoffs, I'm talking about, uh, truly a restructuring or reorganization, so. Uh, other personnel news, and I'll, we have to answer any questions about that. We had one resignation in, uh, is that, that was June, right? Uh, Anne Perry, our halftime page. Uh, we officially got, uh, Cherry Mallory retired, uh, on the thirtieth. Cherry, one, three, four years as a library assistant. Uh, and Christie Nicholson Smith, it became official into the line, but she was promoted from halftime library assistant to full-time assistant in her position, so we'll give those to, to the ladies.
And so move on to the diversity committee, so right now, um, we've received the proposals that we're going to look at, and I had Robert yesterday about my, shoot my pick, um, and he's still talking to a few other people, but he hopes to have something by next month, right?
Oh, hopefully.
Right, and by, by the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, next week.
Okay. So, you have anything?
I, ooh, I just couldn't.
Just go back.
We'll figure that out. Um, I know, I'll, but, you know, I, I had an unfortunate death with my family, of course, this past week or so, so I've kind of been falling back on some other responsibilities, my family, family, and all the, you know, preparation things, so I, I haven't had as much chance to give as much time to that project as I did, I need to, uh, unfortunately, so. I'm getting back some bits, it's my first day back at work, so, or my campaign, so, I'm pretty lucky.
Sorry, sorry.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. But definitely, I'm very committed to getting it done, obviously, for the proud of these years, so, um, possibly. I, I call this from my heart.
I'll be still, I'm just going to be in this class.
That's fine.
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, we might, and, well, we, well, do you have any ideas about a new chair?
Uh, I've been talking with different ones about that, uh, you know, the good thing about our, our, our whole process here at Gator Public is that even though we've been working through the committee and trying to work for it, getting an assessment, I think that's the first step, is looking at assess, assessing who we are, and also finding out what our community thinks about a library as far as diversity and the resources that they provide, uh, we've actually been working in-house, too. You know, we've been assessing, assessing and updating our collection, you know, looking at our, our staff, you know, how we're powering, you know, our, our tools for, you know, bringing the people on board, things like that. So we've not just been stagnant, you know, so this next process, um, you know, as far as working toward, uh, whatever diversity consultant does, I think that'll be, um, you know, a plus to what we're doing, too. I think it's necessary, and as far as someone working with a consultant, uh, Rick and I were talking about that, you know, and, and it'll be interesting, because it probably should be maybe, uh, someone who worked with the board, or some, you know, management staff, uh, so I don't know, you know, if you have any.
I, I, I think that I'd like to see you guys make that decision, I, when we first formed the committee, I named you, but, you know, I also said that I'm not going to, I am not going to. but, you know, I also said that I'm not going to, I am not going to direct that committee. I'm going to listen to that committee. And, uh, so I think that, uh, that, you know, you guys can come up with a, uh, you know, somebody that you think is good. But I do think that somebody that's management or, or, or board is the best, is the best crowd.
Yeah.
And seven boards, but actually I've been co-chairs. Definitely enough two people, absolutely.
Yeah.
So comfortable.
I think that's, that might be good too. Give another number, any of the management staff. Okay. All right, I need to say house on that. And so we'll move on to the meeting room policy. It should be in your packet. Hopefully you got it. But basically, um, the recommendation was to accept the meeting room policy with the changes.
And I added that, I added that line which is, uh, I think, uh, that we've kind of discussed after the meeting.
So it's in blue, it looks like. So the, the gist of it though is we don't want to prevent people, like organizations, from booking the room over 12 times, but there is a preference for people who haven't used it as much. So, um, if anybody wants to make the motion to accept the meeting room policy as presented.
Sorry.
All right. So in this case, you guys aren't here, but we don't have to roll call anymore. So, right, we do for, for financial, but, so that's a check register. But in this case, we do not have to turn it up online. So I would take, uh, so it's been seconded. Does anybody have any, anything else on this? Any questions? Okay. So all of you?
Aye.
Aye.
Any of us? All right, and I'll say aye. So the meeting room policy changes in the past. So we'll move on to the non-library room policy. And I think basically what this was, um, the changes that they were kind of duplication of language.
Yeah. Yeah, we eliminated a lot of, a lot of redundancy. It wasn't a lot more than that. It just, it just simplified it. There's so many things we said twice that didn't seem useful.
Yeah. So I will also take a motion on this one.
I'll move. Second.
All right, so all of you?
Aye.
Any of us? All right, so we'll move on to, we did not have finance properties meeting. No meetings for the foundation. We did have friends in the library meeting. Do you want to talk about it? I did actually go in this meeting.
Yeah, I, uh, the fire alarm kept going off. That's all I remember.
Yeah. Um, so we talked about the meeting room, removing the room, which we'll talk, we'll discuss more on the relocation item. But they are having a library book sale.
Yeah, so if you, if you have a scene in, is, uh, the, the, the friends of library be given a 90-day notice to vacate from city. I mean, we know this is coming, as he talks about it, uh, but, you know, that doesn't mean there's a really good plan yet. So, uh, we'll, we'll discuss that more.
So, I mean, ultimately, they're just going to try to liquidate their inventory. Hopefully, either Ed, the, the sale, the sale this weekend. Well, Saturday. Um, if anybody's interested. Um, and it's open, no appointments. And then the next one is in August. So they're going to try to liquidate and they're going to take everything. They usually have somebody come and move, like pack all the books up from the sale room and then they put them on pallets and then they take them over to City Center and then they restock the room. So they're just not going to restock the room. Um, so hopefully that will help. Um, and I guess the only other thing was I'll start assigning board members as of September. It's like the, whether we have more board members or not, I'll just go ahead and start assigning people to person.
What, is there a meeting again?
It's on the second Thursday. And it's a four...
They did for one funding request. The program was...
It was Australia?
Yes, it was about $250. They also, uh, of their own accord, uh, voted to spend $100, to purchase $100 in books, uh, in honor of our group. All guys.
That's great.
They were angry. Yeah, I mean...
How long does this thing need to last? Because I have a...
They're pretty good, they're, they're pretty good at, at one hour.
Yeah, and you can, I mean, you can, it's not, it would, it's, it's more for, for us, it's more to, to show who we are and, and to give a report to them of like what the board's doing. It's just kind of a, you know, here are kind of the things that we're working on right now. You just give a report. Um, and then they talk about, like, usually it's like liberating books now. They have books between bites, um, which is, they're starting up in September. It's the first, I'm saying. Um, so they talk, they ask them about books and so, um, but, you know, if you can't stay a whole time or if you need to leave or whatever, I mean, do whatever you have to do, so. That's all I have for that. We have one more thing before we get to new business, or old business. We have old business first. So Illinois, I H L S?
Good, this is not from the executive council, but I did attend a member's panel meeting today. They had Karen Egan and a new person per state library. His name escapes me. Kind of talked about federal monies, uh, the, the last COVID bill available to COVID libraries in Illinois. Uh, so the federal government gave these money, these monies to the states and the states decide how to administer it. We've been watching and watching and watching. And, uh, yesterday, they, you know, finally sent out the, uh, the grant information. And it's due August 15th. Uh, the grants are, we have patients who knew August 15th. These are not...
Easy to do.
Straightforward grants. Now, here's, I, they're, um, they were kind of touting that, uh, you know, we've got $4.7 million. So if you do math, uh, that's about $3,000 per library in Illinois, uh, which is, for some libraries, is a different spending. I mean, there are a lot of really tiny libraries. Uh, but they're competitive grants. They're not just, they're, they're not going to just distribute them. Uh, I, I'm going to give them a, a third going over tomorrow. I see a couple of areas of possible promise. But again, we've got to look at, we've got to balance that against the, you know, the, the labor hours that are going into it. Can we beat that deadline? And we have to show that whatever we do sustain. So that's going to be the decision that's going to make in the next few days. I think that we have, I think there's more promise than getting in on some of, uh, under city umbrella. They got, at my understanding, is their COVID monies that came in this year, this time and last time are not competitive grants, but municipalities are just, okay, you're surveying X number of people. This is how much you get. So, and then we were, so last year, we didn't apply for any of the, you know, million and a half of libraries that are in this state. We worked with our city to, uh, to get under their grant umbrella. And we got all our PP paid for. We got, uh, you know, we got some monies for, for, uh, some of the hotspots and some other things. So I think that's a, a better route for us. You know, talk to young kids a bit. I need to give Vicki, uh, the city a call to manage the COVID grants and see what we can do. Uh, they've got, some of these grants are about space. You can get excited until you read the, the construction note and stuff.
Yeah.
It's about furniture and stuff like, rear-ending furniture.
Got it. All right. So we'll move on to old business. So we're opening, we still have two potential up in the air that have submitted their applications. Um, as far as I know, they're still pending, uh, really just pending the meeting that got canceled last week, like broken.
Yeah, and has yet to be rescheduled.
Oh, Austin heard that. Let me see if she can reschedule her, if you want. I don't know. You want to ask Ken, because she was rescheduling.
Yeah, I, I can reach, well, uh...
Or maybe.
Yeah, I can reach out to her. These are people that fill out the cases and Julie's waiting to talk to them.
Yeah.
She, so she, about the last couple of years, what she started doing is the final, the final step before she appoints is she asks me to go over and be with her and the candidate and have a brief conversation. I think Carl has been the only one. You've done that list so far?
I mean, I talked to...
Do we know, do you?
I, I said one. It was just, you know, me.
It was COVID at the time and you and I just talked on, yeah.
She would be...
Well, yeah, I don't know. Just you leave and I agree with her.
Yeah. So, um, and you could, you had some other people that had reached out to you?
Yeah, and I had to tell everybody that, I mean, that's, is, is talk to, to the board president or just apply.
Yeah.
You can also just directly apply and I can, I'll send a link.
Send a link and maybe we can get people to, like, you know, send it.
So send a link, tell you guys?
Yeah.
So the two that are going off are...
Might go on a hang, right? And we're already down anyway.
I know.
Yeah.
Say goodbye.
I'm ready. That's why I got you here and Susan here.
Nice to get you.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, yeah.
We, we, when we talked about the business, we did talk about skill sets. What's skill sets? Well, you know, we hadn't had the, the, somebody with legal. He's a finance expert. We, we've had, we've, since I've done this board, we've had somebody with a financial background. You know, uh, so...
I know, it's really hard.
Amy is excellent. Yeah, 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 Amy, Amy, great. It's just...
Oh, great, too. I'm just talking about Amy.
Yeah, I know.
Day-to-day or, you know.
Well, it's nice to be great too, so we figure out what the city was thinking.
Right.
It's great getting to sweeten for...
And they said they don't want to have a representative, representative from the city on the 14th. Right? Well, that's kind of informally. I've been told that, that City Manager Ray has a different philosophy about that than City Manager, uh, you know, uh...
Lisa did.
Yeah, uh, so...
Lisa.
Lisa, yeah, right. My good.
So, yeah, it's still up, up in the air. Um, I did sort of a note this week, but I'll, I'll follow it as well. So then we'll move to the electric sign. So at this point, do you want to, so...
I, I've got, I've got to try to get City Manager Ray on the line again because when last we talked and I mentioned the sign, he kind of indicated, you know, since they're going to be having to, you stop organizations or whatever in this, in this building too, maybe we should work this sign together, you know, and...
So they can use it as well.
Right. Uh, so I, I think that, I think that that would be great. Uh, but I think that really you guys aren't approving an expenditure. We're just approving whether the sign is there or not. The expenditure is, the foundation has already offered to pay for it. So I think it might be worth...
Just approving it.
Does the matter have to approve it or not? If the city says they're going to put up a sign with four different... If, if they, if they, if they decide to put up a sign in their own, you couldn't stop it.
Right.
Right. That is correct. But if you, if, I don't want to put up a library sign if you guys say, oh, that's tacky or takes us or whatever. So, I mean, I, uh, and, and, and it is an expenditure of, even though it's a foundation piece, it's an expenditure of over $10,000.
Right.
So if it, I'm sorry, I just got a question. If they decide to go with multiple signage, where does that leave us with? I, what I heard, what I heard him saying wasn't multiple signage so much as let's, let's, let's do this together.
No, no, I know, it'd be like a Farby Plaza sign, correct?
No. It would be the electronic sign.
Let's do this together. So that, so what message is to give a library in the next month?
Uh, I got you. I got you.
Could we just pay up, like, kind of pay up the rental fee? Or is that what they're pushing or is it like we both pay?
I don't know. All I, all, what he said was maybe we ought to talk about that together. And we haven't. And that's why I was saying the money, the study towards the sign for advertising other people on there. That was my point.
It's a review. I think we just want to make our motion to approve this sign. And we can, and, because we're, he's going to have to go to the city anyway, so...
Yeah, and I can always go back to, if anybody's concerned about, you know, I can always go back to the foundation and say, you know, hey, city wants to, this could be a part of this. Uh, do we want to tell them they're going to have to pay for a part of it? Or do you want to pay for it and let the city use it? Or how do you want to handle this?
What did you hear the conversation with City Manager Ray? When did you hear that conversation?
Uh...
Like two weeks ago. We're going to need help in this. I just didn't try to read it.
Well, yeah, it's, 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 it's...
Yeah, I hear that. Yeah.
It turns slowly, but I'll, I'll, I haven't reached out to him to follow up. You know, what I'm telling, what I'm reporting to you guys is that he said that he thought that might be a good idea, so, uh...
So you can go to them and tell them that we voted on it or if, when...
If it's passed and, you know, if you sit, if, we could say, if you guys pass it, I can reach out to him, you know, send an email tomorrow and say, "Our board is, our board has approved, our foundation has approved. Would you guys like to be a part of this? Plus, we're going to have a, a meeting in the very near future with, uh, Samantha and the foundation board president and the brand board president to sort of strategize about how we want to approach the whole thing. And there's, you know, we're going to be doing some renovation stuff and the city's going to be doing some renovation stuff. Perhaps it might be a good idea to work together."
So...
So at some level.
How do we, so how everyone is approving the electric sign as a motion?
Yeah.
We are approving an electric sign.
Yeah, and what you, what you guys, in your discussion last month was that you remove, remove the tree that's blocking the, the view, plant another tree.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so the motion from my understanding is the board is approving the electric sign with the inclusion of removing the tree and planting another tree.
If, if, if that can get done. I think that was your, that was your, it, when you guys discussed last month, that was your condition, that's your motion.
Yes, so that is someone's motion, that's your motion.
So here's your, so here's the thing is that I think that we would want to put the electric sign no matter what. Obviously, we would prefer to have the tree removed and a new tree put in. I've been periodically looking at it and, and if you're in the right lane, it's blocked until you're right on.
Yeah.
But if you're in the middle lane or the left lane, you can see it no matter what.
And that's your, and, and ultimately, that's...
And so I, I think it's ultimately the city's call on the tree, but I think we should put up the sign if we can regardless of the tree.
Yes.
I think the tree should be...
I think that's...
Something that we will request, but is not a deal breaker.
Whatever board wants, whatever board wants to recommend is... Whatever the board wants, whatever the board wants to recommend is.
So rather than condition it on removing the tree, so let's just put the sign and ask them to remove the tree.
And replace it.
And Alfred, Alfred planted another one on the front.
Okay, you got that motion?
Yep.
She used her backspace all over it.
Yes, it was, yeah, so.
I would make a motion.
Okay. All right, so, in this case, it is not a money draw.
It is a fine.
Okay, so all of you.
Aye.
Anything to post? All right, and I will, yeah, all right, okay, so that passes, any other old business?
Yeah, I just want to mention something that I, I should mention during the person. You guys have asked several times about our, uh, Can't Call Our Social Worker, Community Resource Coordinator, Jessica, uh, again, this is funded by the, you know, help board. Uh, I, you know, I, she gave me a report that, for, for June, that was really interesting. Uh, so she taught a group of master social work students, is in at Brandon University of China. Uh, their university school of social work is considered to be one of the most pursued schools in China, and she, I reached out to her. Uh, I'm working with the National, uh, Association of Social Work in Illinois, with my library of social work, as well as discuss various programming ideas. Uh, she's in contact with the executive director of the N S W Illinois, as well as the central district chair. Also, in terms of local outreach, she's partnered with surrounding agencies to begin identifying nodes at risk for homelessness, once the housing or tourings begin, uh, picking there may be at least four individuals in the care at risk for homelessness. Her in-person interaction with June, uh, doubled, and both have been in bad business at the same time, you know, I don't want to need her, but you're glad she's been able to do it, so.
All right, so we'll move on to new business. So, um, in your packet, there is the June check register.
I don't, I didn't see the check register.
I did, that's what I was saying.
And so.
I didn't see it.
Is it maybe on the, oh.
Oh, there it is, I was like trying to look through it.
So the only, um, question I had, I guess, is the database for thirty-five hundred, sorry, sorry. The, the database for thirty-five hundred, I, I just.
Uh, I mean, it's never worked, it's, um, work base, we'll, um. Yeah, I, that is there, just, that, so if you go to, um.
Is that the search thing that you guys are?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yes it is, that's the renewal for that, that's the renewal for that. Now, I, I was really upset at the price, uh, because we hadn't gone live yet, and they wanted to charge us for another year, and I'm like, you've got to be kidding me, and I can buy, it's like we're pulling their magazines, we're pulling everything, and, uh, so this is what we got as a compromise, and it's, this gets us to the end of the year, and then I'm gonna have the, uh, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna look at what it does versus the solace app that's coming through I H L S, and if there's redundancy there, we'll answer that.
Okay, and what about Patreon point, the eighty-five.
That's our, that's our newsletter, that's our newsletter and software.
So are there any other questions on the check register? And if not, then I will enter a motion to accept the check register.
So.
Okay, so we do have a new call on this, so start with Michael.
Yes.
Yes.
And Susan, and Samantha, yes. All right, the check register has passed, so we'll move on to the budget report and the questions.
Well, I mean, you know, we're in good shape, the revenue side is better than expected, except, and I, you know, I haven't touched base with Greg on this, uh, but, so here it is, and I last checked, so July fifteenth today, I last checked, uh, Tuesday, we still haven't received our first property tax disbursement. I remember Greg saying a couple months ago that we're gonna start getting it monthly. Does anybody else recall that, or am I?
I think he may have said that, yeah.
You know, so, and that's, he's, it's not coming from Greg.
No, no, no.
It's coming from.
City, yeah.
No, it's coming from the county.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
So the county collects the taxes. So, uh, it used to be we got it, we got it by June, I'm, I'm looking at you for, uh, it used to be, it used to be we got it by June, uh, every year, uh, and then it's kind of getting pushed back a little bit, and our last, my, my understanding, my, our last communication from the, I believe it was the treasurer does an office, candidate that does the disbursement, that they were gonna start, rather than a couple of lump sums and then one smaller at the end of the year, uh, they were going to be monthly disbursements. Maybe that's still planned, uh, maybe it just hasn't, you know, maybe it starts, you know, at the end of this month, I'm not sure. But as of a couple of days ago, we still haven't, uh, we still haven't. They've only figured it all across that, I guess, all the payments. I, I don't know. Yeah, and I, my, you know, my understanding last year is it's a labor, it's a labor problem. Right. Uh, and, and, uh, there were checks sitting in the office, and they just approved, but by then, treasurer fully, the treasurer's office, so. So, yeah, I, you know, I still, you know, if you look at my projection, I'm still projecting we're gonna get our money. But that's, that's, it, it's never that we get shorted, it's just that it's been, it's been less predictable the last few years. So kind of kind of came, um, we're currently receiving it like in a quarterly fashion, or it's like maybe. No, so, so. Twice a year, right? Yeah, it's, it's two pretty big disbursements, and then at the end of the year, and sometimes it's begun coming at the beginning of the next year. So for the county, that's still the same fiscal year. For the, for the school district, it's still the same fiscal year, but for the, for the state of the day, or the state of public library, it's a different fiscal year, and in a cash accounting, that makes everything turn out weird. Uh, so, uh, but typically, June, we get, uh, over half, uh, and then in September, we would get, we would get another very large disbursement, and December is sort of the cleanup, uh, that's usually, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of our two point eight million dollar levy. So we have not received the last few, when we did affect.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. As of a couple of days ago, I haven't, I haven't looked. You're gonna go to the day or get it. What's that? I'm, I'm just guessing, they don't have it all together yet. It's, yeah, but, it's just, I, I wouldn't mind them monthly at all. I mean, that's easier, you know, it's easier to budget, and it'd be fine, but.
Be really fine.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that makes it easier for the county, but. I'll ask them again.
Yeah. So why, so why is the P P R, or P P R T, like, double?
So P P R T, why, the why is, I, that is a question for the, the, uh, the state department of revenue, because we get, we get this, these are mentioned in the state. So we, I had, my budget was, my original budget was about two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, because back in August, we're all expecting cuts. Okay, this is, this is the personal property requisite tax, it's a few counts you can state. Uh, Greg saw it and recommended that I cut it down to what you see here, uh, he thought my, my estimate might even be a little, uh, optimistic. We're on a pace right now, of course, the state just changed fiscal years too, so, but we're on a pace to collect, uh, that, that number that I highlighted, five hundred and three thousand, which covers up a lot of sins, you know, we, you know, uh, we, remember, we presented a fifty thousand dollar deficit budget.
Right.
And, uh, we're gonna come out, it looks as if we cannot wait in the black, because of the revenue side. I mean, we're, we keep our spending where we thought it was, but our revenue side is much more robust than, than we expected. Now, could that P P R T fall, fall out? Yes, but what I'm hearing is no. I mean, at work, uh, is that, Illinois Library Association, uh, board meeting on Tuesday, our lobbyist, Derek White, you know, reported that.
Well, and even if, even if we get fifty thousand more, wouldn't that still put us in?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, if provided we get, provided we collect, you know, all our, you know, all our property tax, which, you know, one year we were, one year we were about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and what, what did let me, uh, you know, and that kind of got adjusted for next year, so.
And then with professional services and small capital, like, there's significant reduction maybe?
Well, professional services is because we're not, you know, well, one, we're not running, uh, you know, hundreds of pages of documents by the, uh, attorney every week, uh, and two, uh, you know, some of this was an end case, okay, some of this was if we get, you know, we bring the architects back in, uh, if we get a, a consultant, you know, a university consultant, what year, what my prediction here is our current pace, not, it's not accounted for anything, but we don't have anything, anything more specifically earmarked, and small capital, again, you put that, that's kind of, you put it in there because if you've got that small capital need, you need to have it in there, you need to have a budget to be able to do that, you know, so far we haven't.
Any other questions for Rick, on the budget? Uh, so with the friends' library relocation, so, we kind of talked about it a little bit already, that we want to talk about it further, because we don't really have any other information or it isn't paper, and then we are meeting, like, the heads of the boards are meeting to try to figure out where we might want them to go, or where to put them, or.
Yeah, that's part, that's part of what I, you know, I want to put our head together about, and, but I, but I think it's, I, I'm hoping that I can be, even I think a little broader.
Yeah.
Did we, how did we learn about this? Did, did the city, did it catch us, and let us know that they're doing this, or did we find out as news? I mean, I saw beforehand that.